In the order, George, could you take role?
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Here.
Mr. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso?
Here.
All present.
Stand with pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That we're just as a part of the meeting where we talk about our district goals. It seems like every meeting we have, one of the three goals really takes precedence in what we do when we're talking about the levy, a lot of financial prudent stuff. But our first goal is student achievement. And tonight, we're going to meet a lot of new people in our district who are going to help us deliver on student achievement. And we're thrilled that they're here and we're happy they're on board and we're reloading and we're ready to go. And it's going to be a great school year, I'm certain of it. So, student achievement's our first goal. The second one's financial prudence. With that, we try to make every tax dollar work. We maximize the value from every dollar. And we go there. And then our third goal is community engagement. And with that, we utilize our community and all their skills and all their volunteer hours and all their efforts to help us better both of the first two goals. And we get a lot of community help and we're thankful for it. And it's outstanding. So, with that, we'll move on to public comment. We don't have any public comment. We do have, so on the next thing, we have approval of minutes. We have the minutes from the May 16th regular board meeting. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
First by George, second by Duke. Any discussion? Everybody's read them. Let's vote, George.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Treasurers report.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. I have three items for your consideration tonight. They're annual, all annual items and kind of grouping together. They're startup funds for the startup change funds for the beginning of the year for the cafeteria for $950, middle school athletics for $500, and then high school athletics for $5,000. These are the same amounts from the previous school year.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
My short report.
Thank you.
That brings us to the superintendent's report. Welcome back.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Good to be back. Under timely information, we did have a discussion item for tonight to talk about Board of Education guidelines. But in discussion with Mr. Neso, we're suggesting to move that to the August meeting. So, the Board has received those guidelines and will review those. And then before our, at our August work session, we'll talk about those guidelines, what it means for our leadership team, and discuss how we want to implement those across the district. So, we'll move forward with that at the August work session. Any questions or comments on that?
Well, I just wanted to make, it seemed like with all the, it was kind of a busy couple of weeks with everything that was going on. And I wanted to make sure that we could focus on them and really do them justice to make sure that we were ready to go and that we were committed to either those guidelines or something very similar. Maybe we'll even discuss a little bit at a retreat, so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Moving on, under business services, we do have one item for your consideration to purchase bus cameras from the permanent improvement fund. Be resolved the recommendation that the Board of Education approves purchase of the cameras for district school buses from REI at the total quoted price of $121,130.75. Funding to be from the permanent improvement fund as found in Exhibit A. And as Mr. Brechner, our operations manager, has shared with the Board, this is a new purchase. We currently do not have cameras on our buses. This would provide four cameras on all of our, most of our buses in the district that are being utilized as either spare buses, field trips, or on our daily routes to provide full coverage. And we're able to make this purchase through the savings that we've realized in the budget over the years through our bus purchases. So, typically, we purchase five buses. We've been able to purchase larger buses that meet our needs and save money that way. This past year, we've not only reduced the budget, but we bought fewer buses because of the ability to maintain and upkeep the ones in our fleet. So, all told, that budget savings has resulted in over $200,000 in funds that would have gone to school buses and allow us to put cameras on the buses to help support in that area of our operations. So, with that, I'd turn it over for a vote.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
First from Duke. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any board discussion?
I just think this would be a very good purchase for the district, keeping children accountable for their travels. And most people understand that the safest spot, the safest place for a child is when they step foot on that bus and then they go to school and when they come back from school. Sometimes, their lives aren't as easy as it is for us. And I just think that a little bit of accountability means a lot, but also, it creates a safe place. It creates a safe bus ride from their home to school and from school back to their home. So, I just, I believe that a little bit of accountability means a lot for those kids.
I just wanted to mention that I did ask the question about seat belts versus these cameras in the buses. And Mr. Reiba answered that question very well, Dr. Reiba answered that question, that we are still going to be looking at that later on, but it's a pretty expensive proposition, even more expensive than these cameras by a long shot to put seat belts on all the buses. Plus, just getting the kids to wear them would be a hard thing to do and additional responsibilities to the drivers probably to make sure that they at least were buckled in when they started out. And we do have a very low, very, very low accident injury rate in the buses as it is. What'd you tell me, Cameron? By .07 percent?
Nationally, it's like .07 percent of kids on school buses are in accidents on a yearly basis.
Obviously, when an accident does happen, it's traumatic and it can be very catastrophic for the kids that are on that bus. But it doesn't, thank God, doesn't happen very often. And we'll continue to look at it because, as George said, safety of our kids is our primary concern all the time, whether in school or on the buses, wherever. We want to make sure once we pick them up, they stay safe till we give them back to the parents.
And this decision is completely independent of our analysis of putting seat belts on the buses. It's not, wasn't one or the other decision. They're not mutually exclusive. They're both, they're both our goals, actually. So, we're working towards both of those things. I did have one question. Do the cameras pick up anything outside the bus?
So, the cameras that we purchased, there's four cameras and it oversees all aspects of the internal bus.
Internal, okay.
There are options for six cameras on buses which would get a view behind the outside of the bus and in front of the bus. But because of cost, we did not go with that system, but those can be easily added to the system we're purchasing if we would choose to do that in the future. We thought we'd start with four, get the internal, the entire internal bus covered. And then if we want to move to the external of the bus, then we can do that at a later time.
And then, Cameron, these cameras can be retrofitted from one bus to the next bus?
Correct. So, all it would do was, would cost the district just the wiring to put it in a new bus. So, if it's in a bus and that bus is no longer usable by the district, we take the cameras, we take the hardware out of the bus, put it in a new bus, and it'll cost us some wires but minimal cost to the district.
Any other questions?
Oh, I have a whole slew of questions. Did we get any competitive bids for these cameras or was this the only outfit that provides these cameras? Or how did we arrive at REI?
Mr. Brechner did, I can't say from memory how many specific quotes he got, but he looked at two aspects. He looked at quotes for the cameras as well as quotes for GPS. He's still researching and not ready to make a recommendation on the GPS component of it, but he did get quotes on the camera system and based on the features and the options and the price, recommended this.
And what's the life expectancy of these cameras? Like, you know, cellphone cameras, every year comes out with better, better camera capabilities. I mean, how long are we anticipating before we would go, oh, my gosh, these cameras are awful, we have to replace them wholesale?
The cameras in terms of the picture and the, because they're stationary cameras and the picture that they get is going to meet the needs of what we need on a school bus. Really, what you're looking at is what is the normal lifespan of a camera on a moving object? I can get you those figures, Ms. Ludwig, I don't have those at hand, but it would be just the typical of what we have as a lifespan of a camera that works in our buildings. So, I can find that out and share that with you later.
That's all I have.
Okay. What problem are we trying to fix or address?
The problem that we're trying to fix and address is the fact that we have no documentation or surveillance on our buses. So, let me speak from my experience. Almost 10 years ago, I was in a different district and we had cameras on the buses. I firmly believe we are behind in as many districts that don't have cameras in the buses. So, we have a lot of principals in the audience that will be coming on board. The amount of time as administrator that I would spend investigating issues on the bus in Strongsville without cameras and the amount of time I spent investigating issues on the bus in the other district was significantly decreased because, not that children lie, but they have different variations of the truth. And your job is to find that truth. And when you have that camera, it solidifies things. It's changed the way, excuse me, it's changed the way that we investigate in our buildings with camera coverage. Because what used to be, I have to talk to every kid on the bus to figure out what the truth is, I can look at the camera and say, yes, you did this, I see it on the camera, and here's the consequences for it, or here's what we're going to do. It's also about, you know, adult safety of having a camera in the bus if there's, you know, we get accusations sometimes if I saw a driver on a cellphone, which is illegal. You know, to be able to look at that footage and to see whether a driver was on a cellphone or not. So, ultimately, it's about, the first and foremost is about the safety of our students on the buses, of being able to have that video footage should we need it. It's the same reason I would, I would argue why we have cameras in our building, is to be able to have the surveillance, to be able to keep our kids safe, to be able to have our kids know that there are cameras on the bus, and then to be able to use that footage to handle things accordingly and use that as a tool for administrators to do their work.
I know this puts you on the spot. Do you have an idea of how much time or how much is involved in that?
In what, Mr. Miko, the investigation?
Administrative stuff that's going to collapse.
Well, I think we have a couple people here that could talk more accurately.
Is this a daily activity? Is this a weekly activity? Is this a what-have-you?
It depends on the building. As you look at the high school level, it becomes a little less cumbersome because of the age of the student. But at the elementary level, I would say a couple times a week, Mr. Marino. And at the middle school level especially, morning buses, the secondary folks, our kids are a little sleepy, so the morning ride is usually pretty good. But it's the afternoon ride that becomes a little more adventurous. So, I would say, you know, having held all of those roles throughout my career, you're dealing with bus reports probably anywhere from three to five bus reports a week that you're having to deal with.
Okay. And ballpark, they take half an hour, an hour?
At minimum, depending on the issue.
But what I'm getting at is you can, you can say the investment can actually save time, which becomes money.
Right. Because if you look at, there's bus reports, you know, there's things that are not allowed on buses such as this child was eating or drinking on a bus and wasn't allowed to do that. That's an easier one than, especially what we find sometimes is he or she pushed me, he or she got physical with me, you know, they took my stuff. Those are ones that take, you know, I just keep on looking at Mr. Marino. Those are ones that...
Did he try to take your stuff?
That's right. Those are ones that take time because you need to talk to multiple kids to give multiple perspectives. And you're not only taking his time as an administrator, but you're pulling students out of class, taking their time from learning. So, your point is well taken that there is not only an administrator's time, but a student learning component that's going to be saved because I can look at the video, see very clearly what happened or involve fewer kids in the investigation, which is always a benefit.
You know, one of the things that, in my thought process to consider this, is the cameras on the inside deal with the students and their behavior. And depending on the severity of that behavior, either, you know, we just deal with it and it's, you know, part of, part of learning how to be on a bus. On the other hand, if it's a danger, something dangerous or safety related, that gives it a different burden. I would like to direct, assuming the Board agrees, Steve, I think the exterior cameras from a safety perspective are possibly more important. And I'd also like to suggest that the GPS is something that's of a safety concern that we should bring to bear. The company, REI, they specialize in bus cameras, whether it be school buses or travel buses, that kind of stuff. So, they also do the onboard movies and things like that for the travel buses, but this is their specialty. This is what they specialize in. And their systems include the GPS, they also include the Wi-Fi. One of the limitations with the system we have is that the hard disk DVR is on the bus and to review it, you have to go to the bus and access the hard disk DVR. So, those kinds of things, I think we need to investigate. Any idea, do you know what warranty is included?
I don't have that off the top of my head, no.
Warranties end up being something you pay for, whether it's baked into the price or not. But I want to make sure that we're making a complete purchase to include the warranties and so on. The cameras aren't going to fail, they're going to need to be replaced on a somewhat We had that discussion as far as the seat belts, the GPS, the cameras. So, it's your recommendation that the cameras should be our first priority.
We are prepared to move forward with GPS this year as well. The, not the seat belts. So, my recommendation is that we move forward with the cameras, that we move forward with the GPS when Steve makes that recommendation. The reason he's taking longer on that recommendation is as you talked about with the camera, there's two options, the hard drive on the bus or a wireless, when the bus moves or, you know, can do the wireless piece and download it. There were some issues and concerns we had with that option, that's why we recommended the hard drive piece of it. There's all, and I'm not going to speak to it, Steve is well-versed in it better than I am, but there are also varied options with the GPS as to how it can update its location and what process that that would go through. And Steve is getting more information with, prior to making his recommendation. So, it's more of a timing aspect for that, is that he's doing a little more research to make sure the GPS system that we purchase is the one that meets our needs based on the variety of options that are out there.
So, Richard, you're, so what you're asking for is you'd like to see a quote for the front and rear cameras on the buses?
Yeah, I think that that would be where, wise. And I also, some of this comes into my day job and I deal with this a lot. What I'm concerned with, and I'm sure, I'm sure Steve is there, a lot of times, you get vendor lock-in where if you want GPS to work, you need the cameras from this brand, et cetera. So, I want to say out loud, you know, we need to verify that if we're delaying the GPS purchase, we're not going to run into a problem where suddenly, the GPS that we would want isn't compatible with the cameras that we have already purchased. So, that's something we need to be aware of and we can bring up and make sure that that's been considered. The GPS, I think from a safety standpoint, I also think from a customer service standpoint, I would assume we're considering the GPS systems that allow parents to see where the bus is and can do the, you know, the simple daily planning. The bus is late, I don't have to sit at the corner waiting for my child to get off the bus. I know it's late and, you know, if you can go to GPS to figure out when your pizza's going to get delivered, we should be able to go to GPS and know when a school bus is going to be in my neighborhood.
Correct.
Okay, we can look at that. For me, it's, you know, it helps with bullying issues, it helps with enforcement of rules, both for drivers and students. It'll be helpful when there's damage incidents, when somebody damages the inside of the bus, does something. And then any unsafe behavior, it's going to be a constant reminder that any unsafe behavior is going to be recorded. So, if a driver's using a cellphone or eating or doing something, or if a student's doing something, moving around the bus and they just don't think, you know, some bus drivers are very good at keeping command of their bus and some just aren't as good. And it's our job to weed the people who aren't as good out. And I think these cameras will help us to ensure that all the rules are being followed. I think Richard's comments are very good. We should make sure that we're not locking ourselves out of things. And I'm ready to move forward on the vote, but I don't want, but I'll make sure that we, because I want to keep going with this. I don't want it, I don't want it to be mid-year when we get these cameras in place or whatever it is. The sooner the better. So, just, we just need to make sure that that's the case and that we can add, when we add GPS, if we choose and can afford to, we add the extra cameras. But I like the idea of getting started internally because I think that's where we have the most control. I think externally, the cameras are good to document things that happen, but you really don't have control there. So, the internal cameras are going to help us control what we can control. And then the external cameras are going to document what we can't control, but maybe a critical safety item at that. But it's still not going to, you know, filming something running into a bus, good, we've got the film, we saw they were on their phone or whatever they were doing, but didn't stop them from hitting the bus. This is what we can do is we can review this activity and make sure that all, everybody inside the bus is operating in the most safe manner, so.
Cameron, do you have an idea? That or just the request to start getting some budgetary numbers? I mean, $121 is the GPS going to be in the same ballpark, half of that ballpark, twice of that ballpark? I think it'd be helpful for us to know what our total project plan is.
I'll get that information for you.
All right. Any other comments?
Are we hoping to have these in before school starts?
Yes.
All right, let's vote.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just make sure that he checks on the GPS and the integration of that.
It does. We've had that conversation of whether it's REI or another company, it will work.
It'll work, okay.
But I will check on...
Emphasize that.
We will. And we'll work on the six camera price and then the GPS price as well.
Sooner than better.
And warranty as well.
Okay.
Under curriculum, we have a few items for your consideration. The first is an overnight trip, overnight trip of the Boys and Girls Cross Country Team to an overnight camp. The camp will take place August 4th through 8th at the Lakeside Historic Villages. Transportation will be provided by parents and costs associated with the trip will be paid by the kids participating and through fundraising.
Can't they just run there?
Probably a little far. Any questions on that one?
No.
Any other jokes?
No more jokes. I'm done with jokes for at least a minute.
All right, under student services, we have three items. With the educational service, Center of Northeast Ohio, be resolved the recommendation that we enter into a contract for the admission of students for visual, audiology and/or hearing impaired services for the 2019-20 school year as in Exhibit B. Also, that we enter into a tuition excess cost agreement with educational alternatives for placement of students with disabilities for the 1920 school year as found in Exhibit C. And finally, that we enter into agreement with the Cleveland Clinic Children's Hospital for Rehabilitation on behalf of its Learner School for Autism for a student with disabilities for the 1920 school year as found in Exhibit D. Any questions on student services? Next up, we have Jenny Pelco with the human resource report for the month.
Thank you, Dr. Reiba. Good evening. Under human resources, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E1, I have the resignations of administrative staff. Under, continued under E1, resignations for certificated staff and a resignation for a certificated stipend. Under E2, I have appointments of administrative staff. And since many are in the audience, I was just going to take a minute and introduce them to everybody. So, I'm going to go a little out of order because I do have one on the addendum as well. We have Jamie Bailey, who will be our new assistant principal at Strongsville Middle School. Jamie's been at Kinsner since 2010. She started as a TA and currently is a teaching fourth grade. She's been such a leader in our district already, serving on the DLT, her BLT, her PBIS committee, her BAC committee, and just continues to offer her voice and opinion and expertise on all of those committees. She grew up in Strongsville, she currently resides in Strongsville with her four daughters and husband. She has had the goal of becoming part of our administrative team for a while now, and I'm just thrilled to help her continue her journey and lead our district in this new capacity. So, Jamie, I don't know if you want to say a few things, but...
I did. Just wanted to address the Board and say I'm very excited for this opportunity. My heart lives with Strongsville and helping the students and the staff and the teachers excel and get better. So, I'm very excited to take the opportunity at the middle school. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, get a welcome.
Jamie, Dave, we're going to...
You have one in the gauntlet.
We're going to meet you.
I forgot to tell you that.
I got jeans on, whatever.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Don't look us in the eye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're next.
I know, exactly.
Oh, you're next.
I think you got the principal report.
So, next we have Steve Diedrich. And Steve is going to be our principal of Kinsner Elementary, replacing Adam Marino. Steve has been with Strongsville City Schools since 2014. You've taught AP Government and Government since that time. Prior to that, you taught at the elementary level and high school levels at Wellington Schools. You were Title I and also in a K6 setting before the high school. You're a graduate of the Ohio State University. You have your K-12 reading endorsement and master's degree. And while at SHS, he actually met his wife, Amanda. And she also teaches math at the high school, but is currently on parental leave with their beautiful daughter, Lila. So, we are just very excited to have you on board, Steve. He was our summer school administrator this summer and did just a phenomenal job. Very few questions, just handled everything that came along, so we're thrilled to have you join our team.
I have to say, I'm eternally grateful to Strongsville City Schools because without Strongsville City Schools, I obviously wouldn't have met my wife and I wouldn't have a beautiful daughter. But first off, I want to thank the Board, thank Dr. Reiba, thank Ms. Pelco for the opportunity to serve as Kinsner principal. Just real quick, I was cleaning out some of my classroom and I'm having a range of emotions today because I'm sad to leave the classroom because I got to work with a lot of great students. But I'm really motivated and excited to work at Kinsner. I've not heard one bad thing about Kinsner, except that Ms. Bailey's leaving, so. And Ms. Marino's leaving too.
Yeah. At least that Ms. Bailey's leaving, right?
Yeah. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And next, for your consideration, we have the appointment of Mr. Adam Marino as our new middle school principal. And Adam has been in our district since 2010 when some awesome person hired him to be her assistant at Center Middle School.
I think it was the Board that did that, saying, just play it out, okay?
Sorry, sorry. I recommend it, recommend it. And then he went to Strongsville High School as an assistant principal, and he's been at Kinsner for the last five years. Adam just brings a continuum of knowledge and having experience at all three levels, I think will serve you well. You have expertise with UDL, I'm going to rattle off a whole bunch of acronyms here, but UDL, MTSS, intervention, PBIS, and your literacy expertise is just extensive. And we feel that you are the right leader to continue the great work at Strongsville Middle School to even reach higher levels of success. And so, together with Jamie and Tina Peters, I think the middle school is in great hands. Congratulations, Adam.
Well, thank you for recommending me to the Board. And the Board, thank you for accepting that recommendation. I'm, and again, thank you today, coming 10 years forward now from that moment. It's a privilege, I feel honored, I'm super excited to be the new principal at Strongsville Middle School. You know, you probably didn't know, both my parents were middle school teachers. They, my dad taught for 35 years, a sixth grade teacher, and my mother has taught middle school and elementary through her whole career, still teaching to this day, 45 years later, still going strong. So, I remember going to their classrooms as a kid, probably trying to get candy from them and thinking middle schools were just huge, monstrous, slightly odorous kids. But I remember the impact that they had on them and the compliments and the lives that they changed. And I certainly got that instilled in me as a very, very young boy. And so, it was my dream to be a, as a middle school teacher. And so, I would tell people that, and they would usually give me the same weird expression, like, huh? Why? Um, but I followed that dream all the way until I did become a sixth-grade teacher, it was my first teaching cur- job. And, um, fast forward again now, almost twenty years later, you know, the paths have been in different areas as, as, as Mrs. Pelco has said, high school to elementary. And when the opportunity came to be, it was, it was not easy. My last five years at Kinsner were awesome, they were amazing. Uh, what I've learned though is, is I like the, I like the whole range. I, I don't, I don't have, uh, a specialty, I would say, in an area. I, I love just making a difference and helping, uh, to be that servant leader that I think I was, uh, instilled as a, as a, as a kid from my parents. Uh, that's, that's what I'm excited about, so, um, I appreciate the opportunity, I'm excited, I'm humbled, um, and I am looking forward to, uh, to a great year. Thanks.
Thank you.
Remember you got William this year.
Thank you, congratulations.
And then we have one more, I would like to introduce our new high school principal, uh, Mr. Joseph Mueller. Um, his professional journey includes more than four decades as a learner, leader, and educational and life coach. Following two decades in the Cleveland Schools as a teacher, mentor, and leader, he has led the Westyaga, Perry, Brexfield, Broadview Heights, and Avon Lake Schools. He has worked with and learned from noted educators such as Deb Delisle, Tom Guskey, Bill Dagan, and many others in pursuit of informed professional practices. Over the years, his commitment continues to be, um, to inspire students and staff and, um, give them opportunities. And most of all, his favorite saying is to get, make sure I get this right, get better every day, right? Um, Joseph and his wife, who's here, also Renee back there, is a retired Cleveland teacher. They have two children and five amazing grandchildren and reside in Lowdy, where they raise alpacas and quarter horses, so, very interesting. Congratulations, Joe, we're thrilled to have you on board.
Thank you, it is truly an honor, um, to get this opportunity. Uh, and I can tell you, I am so proud of Adam Marino. We worked together, uh, a number of years ago, and there was no doubt that he was a leader. Uh, he brings a charisma and approachability and an obvious joy, not only for life, but for learning. I think that, that will inspire all of the students and staff at Strongsville Middle School. It's good to see you and congratulations, that's awesome. And, and I really have been impressed in my very brief meetings with Dr. Reiba and, and Ms. Pelco. Uh, I've, I've lived on the west side of Cleveland, uh, my whole life, except for my time at Perry. Um, and there's no question that Strongsville is an outstanding community with an outstanding legacy of performance in the three areas that you talk about, the academics, the athletics, and the arts. Uh, I look forward to helping the leadership team of the district and to motivating and inspiring every student to get better every day. So, thank you.
Before Jenny goes on with the rest of her report, I just want to congratulate all of our administrators, uh, that are here taking on a new role or taking on their first role. You know, as, as a superintendent, you know, my job and I feel my focus is to grow and coach and develop administrators to be the best versions of themselves. And sometimes that means that they do the best job they can for us, and sometimes that means that they leave and take other opportunities. But my job is not to just sit there and watch them take other opportunities, but build and develop and grow and give opportunities for new leaders, um, to continue on the legacy of what we've built in Strongsville and what we'll continue to build, uh, in Strongsville moving forward. So, as though, although, uh, we wish the four administrators that are taking new positions well in their career and their next step with the opportunities, uh, that they've pursued. I'm thrilled, uh, with where we're at as a district, where we're going, and the support and the assistance the four administrators here tonight are going to bring to make us even better tomorrow than we are today. So, congratulations, and we're thrilled to have you, uh, on board, uh, or in your new role.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, it's outstanding. So, I mean, I know a lot of people were talking about some of the transition that was occurring, but I think if, if any of them met the people that we have in this room tonight, they'd realize we're just going to reload and move on and get better and better and better, and that's what we do in Strongsville. And there's, there's no worries, it's going to be an outstanding year, and we're going to continue on our path, and we're going to make things happen, and then we're going to get better every day. That's what we're going to do. So, uh, thank you, everybody, and we're going to continue, we have one other, we have a new teacher, when we get to that, I'd like to-
We do, yeah.
Yeah?
Yes, we do, she's here tonight. Uh, continuing under Human Resources, under E2, we have the appointment of a, a certificated, uh, teacher. Uh, appointments of certificated supplementals, appointments for certificated supplemental contracts, non-certificated supplemental contracts. Under, uh, E3, stipends for our summer R-Factor training, a stipend for a teacher-based team coach. Under E4, medical leaves for non-certificated staff. E5, unpaid medical leaves for non-certificated staff. Under E6, volunteer chaperones and mentors. And then if we go to the addendum, under D1, we have a resignation of a certificated staff. Um, we already talked about Jamie Bailey being appointed as an administrative staff, and then appointments of certificated staff. And since Heather Magkay actually came to the board meeting, she's been through a, a long line of interviews, but we're thrilled to have her on board. Uh, she'll be replacing Jamie Bailey, Grade Four, um, at Kinsner. So, congratulations, Heather, thanks for being here tonight.
Come up, come up, come on up.
Come on up. Since you're here.
Yeah, you gotta follow the call.
Yeah, you gotta follow it.
I just want to thank the board for, um, giving me the opportunity to join your awesome district. Um, I just finished my tenth year of teaching, so I'm going to start a new journey with you. Um, I've been a resident for five years here in Strongsville, and I've been to many of the community events, and I see how close this district became as we passed the levy. So, it was just awesome, and just being in this room with all of you, to hear the rapport you guys have with one another, I am so excited to join it. So, thanks again for allowing me the opportunity to join your awesome team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Heather.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I believe that concludes my report.
We do not have any items under Technology, so that concludes my report for the month.
Consent calendar?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Jenny, on the stipends-
Yes.
For the R-Factor training?
Yes.
So, the teachers, it's being paid by the Teacher Quality Fund?
Correct.
And then the, the non-teachers, it's being paid for by the General Fund?
Correct.
Is there a limit? I mean, are we, are we, is it anybody who wants to go through the training? Or are we assigning who, are we inviting who can go through the training?
We're inviting some people that did not attend the training when they, when it was offered, due to various reasons. Um, they were not able to, so most of our teachers were trained back in April, but we still have some left that need to be trained. And so, that's what that's for.
Great.
That brings us to the consent calendar. Um, all items in the, uh, in the agenda that are marked with an asterisk are approved in a single vote. Unless someone has an objection, we'd like to have one moved and voted on separately. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke, another second.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Uh, any discussion on asterisk items? George, can we take a, a vote?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And now the part we've been all waiting for, item Agenda Ten, Board Bylaws and Policies, the third reading.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
First. Number one, revised-
We have a motion first.
Uh, okay, so, so moved?
Thank you, another second?
Second.
There we go, all right.
Graduation requirements, revised policy fifty-four sixty, is there a change to that graduation policy?
Well, thanks for the softball, George.
I'm just throwing it out there at you.
Uh, the ma- the majority of our policies are to maintain, uh, compliance with federal, state, and local laws, et cetera. A lot of, uh, word, uh, changing of definitions, words, grammar, things like that. Um, most, if not all, are routine. But you are correct that graduation requirements, uh, there is changes in the biennium budget to graduation requirements. And so, if the biennium, not if, when the biennium budget passes, and most likely the changes to the high school graduation requirements will go through, you can attend a future Policy Committee meeting and enjoy the excitement of updating policy fifty-four sixty one more time. Um, the only other one I was going to bring up is crowdfunding. Uh, we do have a policy on crowdfunding, and that is becoming more and more common, uh, as a way to raise funds for various, uh, activities, et cetera, in the school district. The policy approves crowdfunding, and it directs, uh, our Treasurer, George, to have, uh, policies and, not, I apologize, not policies, but procedures to make sure that crowdfunding, uh, is tracked and is used for proper purposes within the school district. And I know George is already working on them, if not completed them.
The preferred method that my, my office would prefer, I would prefer, is Donors Choose. That way, it's, uh, with Donors Choose, there's no money exchanged, you go on their site, you, uh, create your, your fundraiser, your fundraiser, and then if it meets the goal, then Donors Choose would send the items to the school district, and then we also get weekly reports from Donors Choose, so we know what's going on as well.
And that's something that George makes sure all the, uh, all the different, uh, the teachers, the principals, et cetera, are aware of, and if they have any questions, they follow up with George.
All the principals should be versed in this. Paying attention.
And I wish there was more excitement to, uh, detail, but there isn't.
There isn't. Any other questions?
George?
Vote?
Uh, Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, with that, that brings us to Board of Education and Other, um, I have one other item, but go ahead, George.
Um, Wednesday is our parade, our homecoming parade. Um, I will, you'll see me at the PETA tent, so I'll be hanging out with, um, you know, I'll be over there cooking chicken and, and gyro meat. So, anybody who wants to come, stop by and visit me, you're more than welcome to. Um, good luck to both of you two, because you've got William this year. Yes, exactly, you know what to expect. And then Steve, for you, you've got my daughter, so good luck with that one.
Rest up.
Yeah, she's tough.
Rest up and eat well.
But, um, just thank you, guys. Thank you very much for stepping up and, and taking those positions. It's really important for the district, it's really important for these two. Um, just thank you.
All right.
Richard? I can go first, or?
No, you can.
So, just a couple of quick updates, uh, as far as the state biennium budget is concerned, supposedly we will have one by Wednesday. Uh, the Governor came out and said that, uh, he expects the House and the Senate to finalize their differences and have a budget to him to sign by the deadline, which is Wednesday, otherwise they would have to pass another extension off of the extension. But at least according to the tea leaves, um, they will finish their haggling and have a biennium budget, uh, to vote on Wednesday. They have a session tomorrow in the committee, and then they have sessions in both the House and Senate scheduled for Wednesday to vote on it and rush it over to the Governor's desk. From a school perspective, um, I think the original plan from Governor Dewine will probably go through, uh, without much change, um, other than some money was added. But, uh, Strongsville can expect to see some grant money or some additional money for what, uh, Governor Dewine calls wraparound services, social emotional pla- uh, services, things like that. So, we should see that money. And then, uh, the other thing to pay attention to, and this is my sounding the bell, um, the Cup Patterson Report and the eventual or hopeful change in education funding has been carved out from the budget. It is now a separate bill, it is House Bill three oh five. Um, they plan on discussing it and dealing with it as soon as this budget is finished, hopefully, uh, being able to pass something, uh, before the end of the year. Uh, the changes in House Bill three oh five from the original, uh, plan was, the primary ones is the phase in, instead of it being done in four years, would be done in six years. And the other, uh, complaint from the original plan was not enough was done for, uh, urban districts and rural districts as far as funding is concerned. So, it looks like they're going to do something to address funding for those two. Um, hopefully you noticed, there's one dis- kind of district that was omitted by that, and that would be suburban districts. Um, so it'll be very important for our school district and every other suburban school district to advocate well and loudly to, uh, our senators and our representatives at the, in the state legislature. There are over sixty representatives who have signed on as cosponsors of this bill. So, it seems like something is going to happen, and if we don't pay attention and argue our cause, our cause will be forgotten. So, House Bill three oh five is, uh, the legislation to pay attention to.
Yeah. Uh, we had some people down, down in Columbus watching some other issues, and, and the debate was going on, that the total was going to stay the same, the inner cities wouldn't get touched. And then the rural districts were arguing that it wasn't working based on their property values, so that they needed more of the, of the money. And the only place could possibly come from them was the suburban districts. So, they were, they were just telling us to hold on, pay attention, and, and keep calling.
And advocate our cause. One of the things that I do want to highlight is, is, uh, and this is just a conclusion I've come to, we argue school funding with separate piles. We have one pile for the budget, we have another pile for construction, we have another pile for, uh, those districts like us that were hurt by the, uh, tangible personal property tax. And to some degree, I think it's a, uh, a game, so that nobody pays attention to the entire storyline. And for school districts like Strongsville, the entire storyline is, we get cut in every different avenue, and at some point, it has to stop. So, that's what we need to be advocating for.
And understand, of that middle school and the renovation of that high school, our taxpayers paid one hundred percent of every single dollar. When you go to Akron, Cleveland, Columbus, Youngstown, and Cincinnati, the state pays ninety percent, and they pay ten percent. And that is where I feel it's unjust.
If I may, Mr. Neso, two more quick comments. One, uh, we highlighted the, uh, graduation requirements. I do think they're making positive, uh, uh, moving in a positive direction with high school graduation requirements. Um, if it, if it is approved and, uh, as it, as it's been planned, um, there will be a reduction in the number of high-stake tests. You will have to pass English Two and Algebra One to get your high school diploma, instead of the current seven tests, um, which addresses the idea, the complaint that all we're doing is testing kids. But it also brings about the idea that you'll need to have, uh, at least two designations on your diploma to graduate. Whether that be a STEM designation, whether that be, um, a military designation, there will be a, a host of different ways you can show that you're ready, ready to graduate from high school. And, uh, one of the parts that was good for us is that we've already gone down that path, um, to help students get those special designations with the foreign language designation. And we're working, uh, with our Business Advisory Committee to have a readiness-for-work designation. So, we're already in that vein, um, so I think we'll be able to adopt those changes pretty easily. And then the last comment is, uh, during the, um, Homecoming Festival, there is a tent that have goldfish, and they need good homes. So, please go to the goldfish tent, and, uh, I will help you find a good goldfish for your home.
Even if you don't want one, it will help you.
Yes.
It'll live forever.
My daughter came home with three last year because of you, by the way.
You just don't know you want one.
I would like to add, if, if I could, Mr. Neso, um, you know, we, we are a member, as, our district is a member of the Alliance for the High Quality Education. Um, and I sit on their Accountability Committee. Um, and as, as Richard talks about the, uh, graduation requirement, what has been adopted or is to, is in the bill, is what was sponsored by Alliance for High Quality Education. So, you know, sometimes we join these groups and wonder, how do, how do they advocate, what do they do? Um, so, we're proud to be a part of the, you know, I was proud to be a part of a member of that group, uh, but also see that come to fruition, um, with a couple other organizations. of that group, but also see that come to fruition with a couple other organizations that sponsored it. So I do think the new requirements for graduation are a step up in terms of what our kids in Ohio and in Strongsville deserve.
Excellent. I have only one other. It's kind of an odd one. I read a report the other day. I see that we have, at times, we have vaping issues in the high school and other places. I see it in the mall. I see it all over the place. I saw a report the other day that young people are seeing a significant amount of teeth rot, like it's rotting their teeth. There's sugar in it. You might as well be chewing tobacco because these kids who don't have any dental issues are now going to the dentist and coming out with all kinds of bad teeth. So you might think it's kind of cool, it looks okay. See how well you look with brown teeth, summer teeth, as they describe them down south. Some are there, some are missing. So, be careful what you're doing. That's it.
That's two jokes.
How's that one?
Two jokes tonight.
Two, yeah.
Adam's got that handled. Don't worry.
All right. The Mueller will take care of that. But, okay, with that, we move on. We have a meeting notification. We have a work session on Thursday, August 1st at 7:00 right here. We have a special board meeting. It's our retreat. It should be held on Tuesday, August 6th. It's not nearly as fun as it sounds. And then we have a regular board meeting again on August 15th, right here. We have no need for executive session. And with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Any objections? Any discussion? George, take a roll.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 7:51 PM.